Okay, good morning, ladies and gentlemen, staff, council. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and I'm gonna ask Talu to say a prayer this morning to open it up.
To serve our residents, we ask that you be with us in our deliberations and in our decision making. We ask for wisdom, for counsel as they make decisions in the best interest of our residents today. We also do ask at Christmas time that Lord you bless our residents and that Lord they will all enjoy and experience the joy of Christmas. Amen.
Amen. And Merry Christmas to everybody. Just wondering if there's any additions to the agenda, Al?
Thank you, and good morning, Mr. Reeve, members of council. Yes, there's one addition to the agenda, it'll be seven point four, under new business, infrastructure budget amendment.
Seven point?
Seven point four. And Brian, do we have?
It will be available through the app once council passes the motion to add it to the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Any other additions? Okay, seeing none, I need a motion. That adopt the agenda. Thank you, Counselor Subcheck. Any debate on that? Nope. All those in favor? Carried, thank you. I guess we need the adoption of the minutes, regular meeting, council. Yeah, thank you, Counselor Fedeav. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried, I need adoption of the committee of the whole, correct? We need a motion for that? Okay, thank you, Counselors Carson, for making that motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried, thank you. I guess we'll go right over to new business. Planning and community services?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Administration has been working on a review and update of the Locuri major area structure plan.
Sorry. Administration has been working on a review and update of the Locuri major area structure plan to ensure that the plan is consistent with current practices, municipal policies, and community aspirations. The review and the update of the Locuri major area structure plan has undergone the following steps of public consultation. So July 2019, it was initiated with the consulting firm of StanTech. November 10th, 2020, we did have an in-person open house that was scheduled that was canceled due to COVID restrictions. However, we were able to conduct a virtual public engagement presentation and survey. August 17th of 2021, an in-person open house was completed. And October 27th of the same year, council did give the bylaw first reading. December 8th, the public hearing was held at the regular meeting of council. Administration is now requesting council to consider passing both the second and third readings of the bylaw.
Thank you.
I made the motion for second reading of the bylaw.
Thank you, Counselor Quick, for making that motion. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried, thank you. And you'd like the third?
Yeah, I'll make the motion for a third reading.
Okay, thank you, Counselors Carson, for making that motion. Okay, any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried, thank you. Thank you, good job. Onto seven one two, policy three C one, sorry, C three C zero one one.
Good morning, council.
Morning.
Policy number three C zero one one, community association operating and capital grant policy, was presented for council consideration at the December 8th, 2021 regular meeting of council, which was then tabled to the December 15th committee meeting as a whole, where further discussion and evaluation occurred. At the December 15th committee meeting, the following motion was made, that the committee recommends to council that they adopt amendment, an amendment to policy number three C zero one one, community association operating grant policy, with additional revisions as directed. The request revisions at that time were to include keeping urban not-for-profit community associations as eligible organizations under this policy. So attached for council's review is the amended and final draft of the revised policy. In 2022, our current budget limit for this policy is approximately $700,000, which is what it was in 2021 as well. So administration is recommending that council adopts policy number three C zero one one, community association operating grant policy as amended.
Thank you. Okay.
Do you all make the motion to accept that? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Craveyak, for making that motion. Any discussion on his motion? Yes, Counselor Fedeav?
Mr. Reeve, in regards to this, we had quite a bit of discussion. When is this discussion gonna continue? In like, in the new year? Are we looking at halfway through to make some changes or not? Or recommend the changes, or how are we gonna work this? To include or exclude the urbans and how we're gonna do that?
Through the Reeve, our direction is to revisit the inter-ministerial collaborative framework agreements we have with our urban communities. Over the next, they actually do not expire, depending on the community, either four or five years from now. However, each year, there is an opportunity for us to meet and discuss possible changes within, if they're mutually agreed to, between the two parties. So I understand Mr. CAO will be looking at ensuring that that discussion does occur, at least hopefully next year, if he wants to join in.
Thank you, Esther. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. One of the things we'll have to do, and we've got a plan for early, sometime in January, is to select the ICF committee. The ICF agreements are very clear that each municipality is supposed to have a committee formed for each of those that is supposed to meet on an annual basis. So we'll be coming back in January with a request for decision for council to appoint members to each of the ICF committees, particularly for our urban neighbors. There's not, I don't think there's quite the urgency in terms of our rural neighbors. And then once the ICF committees are formed, it's just a matter of setting up some dates, having a bit of a workshop with the council and the committee and those ICF committees regarding what's in the ICFs themselves, because I don't believe this council might not be entirely familiar with the contents of those ICFs. I have sat down and had some conversation with counselors as they've come through my office, but I think we're probably into January, we're gonna have to have as part of our committee, the whole in January. The Bonneville and Cold Lake ICFs, the general structure, the document are identical for both municipalities. The details are what separates them, and then I think from there, once we're familiar, once we have the committee set up, we can set up ICF committee meetings with our urban neighbors, probably into February, March, so fairly quickly.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried, thank you. Thank you, Esther. You're up for the next one?
Yes.
All right. One two, community action grant policy?
Yes. Policy number three C zero one two was presented for council consideration at the December 8th regular meeting of council and was tabled to the December 15th committee of the whole meeting, where further discussion and evaluation occurred. At that meeting, the following motion was carried, that the committee recommends to council adopting amended policy number three C zero one two, community action grant policy, with the additional revisions as directed. Further to the direction from council, at the May 19th, 2021 committee meeting of council, administration is also recommending that the current industry cares legacy fund reserve be renamed and reallocated to the community action grant reserve fund. Attached for council's consideration is the amended policy.
Okay, thank you, Esther. Yes. Okay. Okay, so number one, thank you. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess seven one four, Canuso? Al?
Mr. Clausen will, and I just, and just before count through with the Reeve to council, there were some changes yesterday that the premier announced and that Dr. Hinshaw announced. I have a bit of whiplash from announcement a week ago, loosening restrictions yesterday, tightening them. Our, the RFD talks about a bunch of stuff, but I think it's important, I just received an email a couple of minutes ago. We talked about a hybrid model, and I know there was some emails floating around about the hybrid model. I just received an email here literally 10 minutes ago, and we're confirming with Alberta Health Services, the province doesn't recognize a hybrid model. That's the information I just got. We are gonna confirm that with Alberta Health Services. It's either the full R E P program, which means everybody on the hill must be vaccinated, or it's not. So I just literally got this email like three or four minutes ago. I'll allow Mr. Clausen to continue with his presentation. But until we get that confirmation, any discussion on the hybrid model is, until we know for sure, I don't know if there's, you know, if we're talking about a hybrid model, it's, would even be worth it at that point.
Okay, Counselor Fedeav?
Yeah, thanks for discussing that. That was a question I had last night when I was looking this up, but about 11 o'clock. They still haven't updated their system, and on Alberta, on the Alberta site, under ski hills, it still allows it, so I'm not sure. I know you're right off the, you know, hot off the presses, but as of last night, they still never changed it.
So we're going to confirm, and I believe that the manager at Kinesu is in the process of confirming, but the email I received says, based on the COVID-19 exemption program document, it appears specifically, it appears they specifically target ski hill resorts to have, to have to pick one or the other without hybrid options, page 13 and 14. A ski hill resort that chooses to implement R E P must implement it for all indoor areas of the ski hill resort, including food service, venues, indoor amenities, retail, rental business entities, and enclosed chairlifts or gondolas. So there's a bit of conversation back and forth in the email, but that's, that essentially closes the entire chalet to the non-vaccinated. When you take right out of page 13 and 14 of their ski hill resort exemption program, is that the entire building would be off limits to the non-vaccinated if we implemented a full R E P program. If we didn't implement the R E P program, then we're back to social distancing, one-third occupancy of the building, et cetera, et cetera. But I think it's best at this point, that's, I said, we're waiting for confirmation on this from Alberta Health Services, but I think it's probably best at this time to let Mr. Clausen continue with his presentation, and then maybe get some direction from council regarding some of those things.
Okay, thank you, Al. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve and council. So further to Mr. CAO's comments, this is around kinda the program that's out at Kinesu right now. As you know, we opened up Kinesu on the weekend. Given the ongoing pandemic situation, the M D of Bonneville has to implement a pandemic control measures that adhere to the provincial and federal government requirements. Considering the positive feedback and level of understanding from the public during the 2020-2021 season, administration recommended that the facility maintain that same pandemic restriction and control measures that were used prior. The pandemic restriction and control measures that Kinesu ridges following requires a max be worn and socially distancing, always practiced indoors in the facility. Takeout food service only, no public indoor dining, no indoor seating, except for designated warm-up areas that were allowed through AHS. Outdoor warm-up tents utilized for eating and warming up. The second floor dining area, as said, could be used as a warm-up area with socially distancing and masking. On school booking days, the dining area will be made available and separated off for single school groups to dine and warm up, as they are recognized by the province as cohort groups. No personal storage areas or bins are to be used again for this 2021 season. The equipment required, again, to achieve this plan, we required the aqua lunch trailer for staff that had a dummy wall to allow for enough staff spacing and area so that they could store their stuff, have their lunches in there. Heated washroom trailer for patrons located in front of the chalet, because there's, again, occupancy restrictions on the washrooms inside. There's three outdoor tents with propane heaters for patrons to use as warm-up and eating areas beside the chalet, and picnic tables are set out around the facility as well. Other items that were taken into consideration when we looked at this plan was how many other ski hills were doing the program and what their models look like. And at the time, there was, we were told a hybrid model would possibly look, be able to implement. And so some of these, most ski hills have implemented a full R E P program, so some, you can't even go skiing without having your passport on those. Rabbit Hill chose a combination system where vaccination passport was not required and provisions for takeout and no dine-in options, so very similar to us, were implemented. They were also kind of bracing for some major revenue losses on that. The rapid testing was discussed in a meeting, however, you would require a full-time nurse onsite to conduct those for our patrons. So with the, there was the news released last night, and then changes within that, and as Mr. CAO mentioned, that it's now, you either have a full R E P program or you have the program which we have that follows the social distancing, masking, and all the other requirements. There's no ability to go one way or the other. The wording that we found regarding that specifically is so around food and beverage, so food and beverage serving entities are permitted to participate in the R E P program, but must apply the R E P requirements to whole dining areas or facility. Specifically, restaurants that have implemented an R E P program must apply the program to the entire area of food service, both inside and outside, i.e., they cannot have indoor dining for vaccinated individuals and outdoor dining for non-vaccinated individuals. So that, that in itself kinda defines what the choices are. There is, it goes into a bunch of different categories, and one under there is a food court, to which the dining hall would kind of, in our minds, be considered that. And for food courts, the seating areas are eligible for the R E P program as long as the area is completely self-contained from the point of screening onwards. For greater clarity, this means all entry points must have controlled access where screening of attendees is undertaken prior to the entry. So that speaks to the area we have. So there's, it's not very clear, and we're waiting for AHS to kind of define, but based on what we found within the requirements and the changes last night, it's either continue with the program we have in place or move to a full R E P program, which would then require the whole hill to be under that program.
Thank you, Bone. Any discussion? Counselor Fedeav?
Yeah, the saying clear as mud kinda really hits it home right now, right? I was really, man, I was trying to figure this out last night. Spent about two hours on it, and I didn't know any more than what I started with. So you're saying that if we had people at the entry points checking, then it could work? Any last little comment on?
Yes, through the Reeve, so that's speaking specifically to the food court itself, but in the previous points, it, under ski hill, the definition for ski hill, it talks, so ski hill resort that chooses to implement R E P must implement it for all indoor areas and of the ski hill resort, including food services, venues, indoor amenities, retail, rental business entities, and enclosed chairlifts or gondolas. So it, that kinda means you have to do it for everything, so the food court would be part of that.
But it's enclosed gondolas, not lifts, right? So, yeah, okay, so the only issues that I've heard of was the warm-up tents weren't warm on Friday and Saturday. People wanted to warm up, and they didn't have the opportunity to warm up and get to chill off. That's why they were loitering inside, trying to stay warm, and trying to get that chill off. For me, it's about the experience. When you're freezing and you can't go inside and warm up, that's not a positive experience. So I'm just wondering, you know, I keep hearing warm-up tents. I don't know, if I get an update on that, that'd be fantastic.
So to, through the Reeve, to answer the, for council, the warm-up tents were, there was a missing piece to connect the heaters to the propane tank, and they weren't able to get it on the Sunday, but they're up and running now. There was also still areas inside that people could warm up. However, we're finding that people were then eating and drinking, and so then that caused some some issues for us, because there's, on the management side of this too, there's significant penalties and fines, including complete shutdown, as we've seen with other operations around if they don't comply. So it becomes a very fine line that we have to walk to try and give patrons the experience that they're looking for, as well as meeting our requirements so that we don't find ourselves with a $100,000 fine or shut down too, so.
So how big is the area that we warm up inside the building? Is that on the, where you put your, where you buy your skis and stuff, or is that upstairs, or where's the warm-up area?
So to the Reeve's question, the warm-up area is pretty much where the dining hall is now.
Okay.
It's a wide-open space there. We thought we'd give it a try with tables and everything, but then we ran into people, because it's right beside the kitchen, they come out of the kitchen, and even though we had signage and everything. So that whole area is able to accommodate that. Now with the new restrictions as of last night, it's only now to one-third capacity, and that's around 75 people total that would be allowed to come in and warm up in that area as well.
What's our capacity of the tents? Like, how many tents do we have, and how much people can we put in there?
So within the tents, there, we have three 20-by-20 tents, and I think they're around 11 or so, but I'd have to confirm that number on, for each tent, what the capacity is there to meet the social distancing requirements, because now you have to be socially distanced and masked, so that.
Yes, Counselor Carson?
So what, I mean, have we asked, like, other mountains and hills what they're doing, or seen other examples? Like in Edmonton, or Table, or Mount Joy, or, you know, not necessarily the mountains, but, you know, hills similar ours?
Yes.
He gave some examples.
Yeah, and then, sorry, and then, so I guess around the tents, so I, how does that work? Like, how, because it's outside? Like, I don't understand the logic behind the tents. And I was in there Monday, and there was no heat as well, so I don't know when that heat was turned on, but.
Monday, later Monday.
Oh, yeah, so then, yeah, I just don't understand the whole tent thing. I mean, it's no different than being inside, but they're saying you can use a tent like that?
It's considered outdoors.
Because there's snow on the ground.
And it's three-sided.
I think you can only have three sides open or closed. You gotta have one complete side open. Is that correct?
I believe so. It's really vague around that, but we did get in discussion with AHS on those. They gave us the parameters that we could allow there. It's, yeah, the inconsistencies are hard to work around and.
And then my last question is, so why can't you use the lockers? Like, what's the one-third with the lock, like, you just can't get in there, or what do you mean? Like, you know, I know you said we did last year, but is there an exact reason why you can't use your lockers to store your stuff?
Yes, through the Reeve, it came down to sanitization and keeping that area clean and people not gathering in mass groups around there to get their stuff out. I guess that's been an issue prior to COVID, and we could see that happening again. But it's mostly around the sanitization. We'd have to have somebody there manning that all the time as people come and go and stuff.
Yeah, I just know, like, a lot of people do what I did, and just drop their kids off, and, you know, they gotta now find a spot in the bush to hide their lunch and their, you know, snowboarding, whatever, right? So their bags and all that stuff, so it's just, I don't understand that part, but I guess that's what you say.
Counselor Fedeav?
Yeah, I know the tents last year worked quite well with the heating. People were pretty happy with it, but a lot of things have changed since last year to now, especially last night. Believe it or not, there's 26 ski hills out there. Looked up every one of them, but last night, so half the ones that are open, actual hills with a, you with a chalet, half of them have the full R E P program, and half of them have the hybrid, but if the hybrid's off the table, I'm sure everybody's scrambling the same way than, you know, that we are, and so can we, shouldn't say, when can we make a decision on this? I'd like to make a decision on this when we get full information, not just a half-baked cake.
Okay, go ahead, Al.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. So Bone went into some technical detail, and I think it's important to step back for a second. When we made the decision earlier this year, late October, early November, to go with the, without having to require the mandatory vaccination passport or COVID test, it was with the goal to have maximum access to the hill for residents as absolutely possible with minimum impact and minimal loss of revenue slash increased expenses. The current program allows everybody in the M D and anybody outside the M D to come and ski, to use the chalet, to warm up, to get rentals, to eat their meal in an outdoor tent. The kitchen is open, the cafeteria is open. We have the warm-up area upstairs. You can warm up in the tents. There was a technical issue with the heaters. That's been resolved, I understand, and I think that's what Mr. Clausen just said. I think it was, it's important that all of our residents have access to all areas in the ski hill that they pay for through their taxes. Our fear was that by doing anything other than this, we would be forcing our 16, 17, 18-year-old staff to start separating and segregating the vaccinated. from the unvaccinated. I think it's a, I think it's a very tenuous position to put a teenager who's working potentially their first part-time job in a position where they're having to police the indoors of a chalet, where they're either going to be forced by peer pressure to allow something to happen or potentially be bullied by an older person into doing something. I'm not suggesting they would all go down that road, but I think we put them sort of in harm's way by doing that. So our current program right now, yes, it probably has some slight impact on the revenue generated from the kitchen, but from January to March of last year, we only generated sixty thousand in actual revenue, of which we probably put in our pocket ten to twelve thousand dollars, based on a twenty-five to thirty percent profit margin on food and beverage sales. So I have heard, well, we're gonna lose money on the kitchen. Yeah, maybe, but to implement the hybrid model or a full R E, with a full R E P program, it would actually be easier from that perspective because nobody, no non-vaccinated could even basically get out of their car. But the hybrid one creates a bit more issue for us. And we now have to have extra staff, we have to be checking passports, we have to be offering some training to our staff for COVID tests. We're probably, Mr. Clausen indicated to me yesterday, we're probably looking at an additional three, four, maybe even five employees. And by the time you compare the extra cost and the extra expense of extra employees to the extra revenue earned in the kitchen, it becomes, I'm not sure we earn enough in the kitchen at a twenty-five percent profit to cover the extra cost of the staff. So I think, I think my recommendation obviously is to stay where we're at, but the full program, I think, is the full R E P, I think, is just, it's out of the question that we can only have vaccinated people on ski hill. I just think that's probably, I don't see a world where we would do that. So the hybrid model, if it's allowed, and it has been allowed in the past and we're just waiting for confirmation, so to Counselor Fadav's question, I think we should have some discussion on a hybrid model. The hybrid model's not really a legal matter, it's more of a management exercise because the government only offers the R E P program or the non-R E P program. We would be incurring significant separation of our residents or our users at the hill. For example, if you were to allow inside the building only vaccinated people, then according to what Mr. Clausen just said, all indoor areas, then non-vaccinated people could not even get a rental. Assuming we could get them a rental, we could somehow work a rental into the, into just outside the doors, I'm not sure how that works, but assuming we could do that, vaccinated people could only use the dining area. Now, I'm not sure council's vision of what they think Kennesaw should look like, and I spoke to Reeve Kalinsky about it earlier, is, so we have seventy, we have, and we're still stuck at one-third capacity. So our upstairs is two-hundred and thirty-eight people is our normal fire occupancy, so we could have about seventy-five people. So imagine a world where seventy-five vaccinated people were sitting in the cafeteria and because it's one-third capacity, they're impacting anybody else coming in that room, they eat their lunch for an hour, and of course, all the non-vaccinated people are forced outside. I would suggest to council, and it certainly is not my vision, that we create two classes of people at our ski resort. I just, that to me is, so we have this vaxxed/unvaxxed issue. One of the worries that I have, again, and it goes to having young people there, is all it would take is somebody who's obviously vaccinated, sitting in the dining area with an unvaccinated person who's obviously not allowed in, some chirping goes on and before we know it, we have other issues at the hill. Leaving it the way it is today, we don't have. Nobody knows what anybody's vaccination status is, they just go, they rent, they ski, and we just don't make some money from the kitchen. Because this all boils down to food. This is really the conversation today is about food. It's really what it's about. We have food now, it's just takeout. Again, the occupancy issues, we're still stuck to one-third in the building. People who do then, if we did open it up with the restriction exemption program hybrid model, allowed people to have access to the cafeteria or vaccinated people to have access to the cafeteria, because of the occupancy issue, they're going to take, we're only allowed seventy-five people in the dining area at a time. So if they sit there for an hour to eat their lunch, that means we're not getting flow through the building. So that means seventy-five people can sit there for an hour and nobody else gets in. Or we're gonna have a situation where people are standing outside waiting for someone to leave so then someone can get in. It just, right now, we're using that area as a warm-up area, which, and people warm up five, ten minutes, then they leave, they go to the washroom, they undo their ski boots. We all know what those feel like. Tagged onto that is the significant cost issues of extra staff that are going to be required to do this. We budgeted for the current program. We did not budget for the additional staff and if council wants, if council wishes for us to move down this road, then we could certainly very, very quickly put together what those costs are, but they would, they're not going to be offset by any revenue, any revenue from, or much revenue from the kitchen. I think where we're at right now, and I feel bad for everybody because this was not the general manager's rules, this was not Boen's rules, this was not my rules, these are coming down from the province and we're just stuck trying to navigate this the best we can. And that's why we kind of landed on where we're at. Everybody has access to the hill, everybody has access to the chalet. There is, is it perfect? Absolutely not. Will the heaters quit in the tent from time to time? Absolutely they will. It's not a perfect solution, but we're not in perfect times. And we're just trying to make sure that the hill has access to as many residents as possible, as often as possible, to both the chalet and to the ski hill. Something that Boen had said earlier, and I touched on it and I didn't realize that was going to be an issue, is how would we then do rentals? If we had the R E P program for the chalet, how do we rent? And what does that do then to our school groups that come from Saskatchewan and Lloydminster and from other places? Because they're obviously not coming full of skis and boots and those things. So our strong recommendation is we just stay the course where we're at. Everybody has access, we're not looking at passports. This is not even a vaccinated/unvaccinated issue. This is how do we manage this piece of property, given what the province keeps doing? So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's kind of, that's kind of our position on this today.
Counselor Fadav, you still, yeah?
Yeah, thank you for that. A couple of things I disagree with, I mean, it's one of those things where it's not going to be a significant amount with the hybrid. I'm not in favor of the R E P, full R E P program, but the hybrid is a good choice. I went through a cafeteria-style situation in Edmonton and then when you go pay, they ask you if you have your pass or if you have your, your negative test, you know, you pay for it, you say yes, and they let you sit down. It's not, not that hard. We're not segregating anybody. Anybody in a restaurant is checked as well, so this is no different than any restaurant out there, so I don't think it's going to be much different than that. But yeah, this whole thing last night really threw a loop in it, but looking forward to hearing that and as long as people are warm and when people are cold, you know, once you have that chill, it's tough to get rid of it if you're not warm and that's my biggest struggle with all this. And if it quits, it's good, but this is not a thing of quitting, this is a thing of not having any or for three days, so, thanks.
Yeah, we could also, do the tents all run by one system or does each tent have an individual system?
So through the reef to council, the tents have, there's two heaters and then it's split out to accommodate to all there and I guess it works pretty good. Last year, there was issues with it melting on the snow, so we're looking at that, just how we can...
So last year with three tents, we had enough capacity there, it was, it worked okay?
Yes, yes.
Okay, sorry, Don. When you checked out those twenty-six, were they all private or they are owned by other municipalities or what did you find or did you look that up?
Well, they're not. And that's the thing about the hills, it doesn't really specify, but again, you know, I'm not a, I'm not a skier.
Yeah.
I can't even tell, but the bigger stuff is definitely full restrictions and I think that's, it's a type of clientele that they're taking in. And we're, you know, we're situated, we know that closer to the big cities, most people are vaccinated, it's no different than us here where we're seeing, we're, you know, C N R L and all the energy companies are going that way as well. So the majority of our people that we, you know, that we're going to see are going to be seventy-five to eighty percent are going to be vaccinated.
Right.
Right? So that's in our area in Edmonton, I think it's even higher than that, so, but who's the clientele?
Thank you. Sorry. Counselor Slipchak?
Yeah, my question is, in the bottom it says you require a nurse on staff to, if we wanted to do the rapid testing, right? Why is it a nurse on staff when we have private companies that just trained a worker, one of their workers in their firm, to do the testing and it's acceptable? But we need a nurse, like, I don't understand that.
This was through the Canadian West Ski Association and discussions we've had with them and that's what these other hills, we're told they have to have a full-time nurse, either it's contracted through a company or whatnot, but they are trained to administer these tests. I'd have to look into if that's changed, but at the time when we were doing this program and it was required to have a nurse to administer the tests. And with all these rapid tests now, that may have changed, so.
Yeah, okay, if you could get me on that, because I don't understand why we'd need a nurse, but other companies, private companies are allowed to use one of their workers who trained online and it's accepted.
Yeah, and like I say, it may have changed since.
Okay. Another thing in regards to Counselor Skarson's question about the lockers, couldn't we allow certain amount, because that's a bigger, big area in there, I know when we went on a tour in the fall, couldn't we allow like a number five to come at a time? Like you figure out your area and have five go in at once and do their thing and then come back out?
All of these issues, through the reef, Counselor Slipchak, all of these issues require staff resources because the lockers will have to be sanitized. The same way we have people that go through this building on a daily basis and sanitize every office in this building and every room in this building all day long, every day, we would be forced to have somebody sanitizing lockers that would basically be, that would basically be all day, just going from locker to locker. Somebody leaves the locker, gets sanitized, somebody gets the locker, gets sanitized. That's really the issue here. It's not that it's impossible, you certainly could open up the lockers, but it becomes the human resources. We would have to find people and hire people and spend that money and create that expense to sanitize lockers.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, so we gotta sanitize lockers every, so we, I notice we have outdoor washrooms, right? So are we sanitizing them after every use?
Yes, through the reef, that's, the washrooms are part of the sanitation, so they do the indoor washrooms, they do the outdoor washrooms, and then they go through the whole facility and they do kind of a...
A loop?
A loop and hit each one, so it's regularly sanitized and cleaned.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Slipchak, you'll find out soon enough that rules for government to government are a lot different than the private sector and that's one thing I had always have issues trying to comprehend, why the rules different for somebody else. Yeah, you'll, once you deal with from government to the M D, man, it's a head-scratcher.
Okay, does council want to move forward on the motion or do you guys want to wait on this and let it run the way it is till we know more or what are you guys thinking?
I'll make the motion that we just leave it as is for now. It would just be recommendation number one up there.
Okay. I have a motion by Counselor Crick to keep it the same way, number one, is that correct?
Yeah.
It's gonna come up on the screen. Okay, any discussion on this motion?
I don't know, it's a tough decision. We had this couple of letters recommending a hybrid model that you all read and stuff, so a hybrid model would be costing us way too much more money, you're thinking?
Through the reef to Counselor Kreviak, in very brief conversations with Mr. Clausen yesterday, we're probably looking at least four positions. So now they're sort of part-time, sort of full-time positions, I don't have an exact number, but we are probably increasing cost, I would suggest, and I don't have a firm number, I probably should wait, but we're probably looking at eight to ten thousand dollars a month just in terms of wages, increase to bring in the people that we would need to manage the hybrid to start checking Q R codes, you know, if we're gonna allow, then we have to have a conversation. Many ski hills are only accepting the passport, they're not accepting a negative test, so is that the route we would, would we accept the negative test at that point as well? We have to set up points of entry, we'd have to block the building off. It would be expensive. Now, it would certainly open the dining room up, so we would create some additional revenue through the dining area, but again, my issue is, the cost is irrelevant. Our Parks and Recreation Department is not designed fundamentally as a revenue generator. We know that. Everybody looks at the budget, we know that we lose millions a year through our Parks and Recreation, to which Kennesaw and the Adventure Park is part of. The bigger issue for me is that we are now going to, through a hybrid model, we would be separating, vaccinated people get to go here and unvaccinated, and yes, maybe as Counselor Fadav indicated, maybe it would take place at the till, but they're still going in two different directions. And that, to me, I'm not sure that that's the, I'm not sure when people see that in action, that that's really the, it certainly wouldn't be my vision of what one of our recreational facilities looked like.
Just a couple other points, just to hopefully help with clarity. To the, so with the rep program, the way it's defined right now, either you're all in on the program or you're all doing what we're doing. There is no hybrid as it reads now.
And that might switch by next week, though. You don't know.
Yeah, and we're trying to get clarity on. The other consideration too is, we receive a lot of patrons that come from Pierceland, Saskatchewan area, schools that come from Saskatchewan, and so we would have to consider those. I'm not familiar with their program there, if they have something similar or if they'd have to meet our standards and how that looks if we did go a full R E P program. Also, prior to us releasing the, or after we did release the season pass tickets, we had substantial questions asking what the program is, because there was a lot of people concerned that we were going to follow suit as similar hills and do a full R E P program where if you are not vaccinated, you can't come on. And so when we rolled this system out, we had substantial uptake from people just waiting to see where we fell because they weren't going to buy the pass if we had that program. So on the revenue side, we could see a lot of people asking for refunds as we've now changed the direction of what we're going to, so there would be multiple angles there depending on which side, so just further points.
Counselor Fadav?
Yeah, it's just a comment in regards to your work facilities, especially one that's as beautiful as the ski hill, Kennesaw Resort. There's no reason why we should be taking the losses as we are and we should change our attitude as far as, oh, it's a lost leader and it shouldn't be. There's private facilities out there that are making money and I think we should strive towards that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Al?
Thank you, Mr. Reivers, Counsel. Just to add on to something that Mr. Clausen said a minute ago, we announced this early November on our Kennesaw Ridge Facebook page and the very first post we put up indicating that we were going to have no, there was going to be no mask or no mandatory passport requirement. There was thirty-one comments on that Facebook post, twenty-four were in favor of what we were going to do and two were opposed. So I think this is one of those issues that I think is going to, we're going to find some split in the community and I don't think which either way we go, it's going to be smooth sailing. But our initial indications, and in talking to Tracy, she's not here today, but in talking to Tracy in Communications, there is much more positive about the direction we're heading than there was negative. There are some groups out there who are negative about the direction we're going, but there are also very many who are positive about the route we're taking.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve and counsel.
Thank you. Oops, sorry. Yeah?
Yes, it's just about that the other, you know, like the hybrid model wasn't available because we're not, you know, not the only ones in that same boat, there's probably about ten hills that are scratching their head on that and it's, I wish the government would change the things.
And Mr. Reeve, members of council... And Mr. Reeve, members of council, in the, in the event that sometime, over the next few days post-Christmas, we do get some indication from the provinces, it's exactly what we are allowed and not allowed to do, certainly prepare to bring this back to council in early January. If, if it, if we do find out we can do a hybrid program with, with council direction, it certainly could come back with, with additional information.
Well, most definitely, but we have to run the hill today.
Absolutely.
Right? Okay, thank you. I guess we have a delegation now, correct, ladies? Ronald McDonald House?
Yes, Mr. Reeve, we have Ronald McDonald Charities Alberta in attendance virtually, just to present to council on an upcoming event.
Oh.
Sorry, Irene, I'm just, there, we're just working on our audio. If you can give us one second here.
Can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can everybody hear me?
We still can't hear you.
Oh, no.
Sorry, we went a little long, sorry about that. It's my fault.
No, that's okay. Can you hear me now?
Irene, can we try that one more time?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Good morning.
Excellent. Good morning. I'm just going to start up my PowerPoint presentation. Okay, thank you for the opportunity to present to council. My name's Irene Skiba, and I'm the Lakeland Region Representative for Ronald McDonald House Charities Alberta. The Ronald McDonald House is a home away from home for sick children and their families receiving medical attention from a nearby hospital. Our four houses are in Medicine Hat, Calgary, Red Deer, and Edmonton, and we have regional offices in Grand Prairie and here in the Lakeland. Even though the houses are miles away, it's our families, our friends, and our coworkers who are utilizing them. This is our 2020 stats for the whole province. However, locally in 2020, we provided 717 nights of comfort for Lakeland families. The longest stay from a Lakeland family was 215 nights, and the second longest stay was 148 nights. The average length of stay for a Lakeland family was 26.21 nights. And the top medical reasons for Lakeland families' stay at Ronald McDonald House Charities Alberta are respiratory, neonatal, neurology, and heart or cardiology. We also have a local fuel card program, and we were able to provide 22 fuel cards for families who had to travel for subsequent visits. And this is quite low from previous years, as many surgeries were canceled due to COVID. While there were many operational challenges associated with COVID, we're proud to say that we continue to serve our families safely and with minimal disruptions throughout the pandemic. RMHC Alberta was deemed an essential service by the Government of Alberta so that we could continue to offer our much-needed accommodations, programming, and transportations to keep families together and to alleviate the financial and emotional and physical barriers to accessing medical treatment. Families unable to stay at the house were supported through gift cards and hotel stays. And we're doing our best to keep all Ronald McDonald House Charity Alberta stakeholders safe while navigating a difficult and dynamic environment. Before the pandemic, our Winterland Invitational was growing at a rapid pace, and there was a lot of momentum and excitement surrounding this event. So from 2018 to 2020, we had a large-scale indoor hockey tournament in Bonneville, Glendon, and Elk Point. We were able to increase teams from 24 to 36. It was an in-person event with auctions, raffles, and 50/50s. We had 100 to 150 volunteers come in throughout those three years, and we started off raising $110,000, and we built it to 138,000. And we were excited, we were planning to expand into Cold Lake as well in 2021, when the pandemic hit. When that happened, we had to think quickly. We moved to an online platform where peer-to-peer fundraising was a strong focus. It was a provincial focus where individuals and families were encouraged to participate in their favorite winter activity. And we were surprised and quite pleased, we raised over $135,000. In 2022, Hockey Alberta is sanctioning tournaments, but they can be revoked at any time. The Government of Alberta has announced more restriction and numbers are on the rise. Therefore, we're continuing to follow the same concept as 2021. And we ask that you will support this event again at the $8,000 ambassador level. Of course, we would like, love to go back to a full-scale hockey tournament and hope to do so in 2023. But as a charity who serves family with compromised immune systems, and with an event that has over 100 volunteers, we need to ensure the safety of all. Last year's Winterland was not ideal, but it still raised comparable amounts, and the money from either concepts goes to families who need support, families like the one in this video. I'd like to open it up now, if there's any questions on the Winterland or Ronald McDonald House.
I guess you did a great presentation. I don't see no, no questions. Awesome.
Excellent.
All right, I thank you for this presentation. I appreciate it a lot.
Thank you.
And all you guys, and all you guys do there. Okay?
Okay.
Well, thank you, Merry Christmas to you.
As well to you, happy holidays.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
So, Mr. Reeve, we would request that either you request this as information and/or direct administration to bring the request back if you would like to consider it for their request for funding.
Okay, what do you guys like?
Sorry, Counselor, Counselor Slipchuk, could you please use your microphone?
I'm sorry. I make a motion that we accept the presentation by Ronald McDonald House and bring back for more information, back in for additional information regarding their request for funding for future council meeting, please.
Thank you, Counselor Slipchuk, for this motion. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried, thank you. What was 7.4? Is that where you want to go now? Or do you want to go to?
Mr. Reeve, members of council, I would suggest move straight into corporate services, 7.2.1, the master rates bylaw.
Right on. Next page. Morning, Tolu.
Good morning, council. The first item I have for you this morning is bylaw number 1786, the master rates bylaw. At the December 8, 2021 regular meeting of council, bylaw number 1786, the master rates bylaw, was given first reading by council. Council suggested a couple of changes to the bylaw. These changes have been incorporated into the new draft, which is attached as Appendix A. The notable changes from the last meeting was that administration eliminate the duplication of the post pounder rates, as well as that we look into the picnic table rental fees that was being charged by our Parks and Rec Department. Those rates have now been changed. In the new bylaw that you have in front of you, the day rate for picnic tables is now $15, and the weekend rate is $30. Also on page 20, since the first reading, we've removed some redundant fees under the development fee section on page 20. We've eliminated the minor home business charge of $50 and the major home business charge of $100, because those are incorporated already into other documents. So at this time, administration is requesting second and third reading for the master rates bylaw, and if passed today, it will be effective from the 1st of January 2022.
Thank you, Tolu.
I'd like to make the motion for second reading, please.
Thank you, Counselor Fadé, for making this motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried?
I'll make the motion to go to third reading.
Thank you, Counselor Crick, for going to third. Any discussion on his motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried, thank you. 722?
The tax penalty cancellation request. M D policy number 1.011, the property tax penalty cancellation policy establishes a uniform and consistent approach for council to address property tax penalty payment cancellation requests received in the M D. Administration has received property tax cancellation requests for council's consideration. These requests are placed in two categories, the requests that meet the criteria of the policy and those that not, do not meet the criteria of the policy. The criteria that's set out in the policy is that we would cancel the penalty request if one, they have paid their taxes for that year, they haven't been late in the previous five years. The listing that you have in, in your package includes the letter that we received from the residents, as well as the reasons for the request. Based on being from, as of today, all of the people that, all of our residents that are requesting that their tax penalty be canceled have paid their taxes for the 2021 year. The first listing that you have in Appendix A hold the residents that do comply, most of the reasons had to do with health issues due to pandemic. One of them did not remember to pay before the deadline, one had to do with a delay with Alberta land titles, and one of them was because of a miscommunication with their lawyers. These individuals on the first list have not been late in the last five years, they've paid their taxes, and fall within the parameters of the policy. The second list that council has before them is actually just one taxpayer, and you'll notice that all the reasons are the same. I stated in his letter, there was an unfortunate family event. However, this taxpayer was also late in paying their taxes in 2019 and 2020. So based on the policy, they wouldn't qualify to have their penalty waived.
Thank you, Tolu. Yes, yeah.
So a late penalty means after October 15th?
Yes.
Not, not September 15th, right?
This year, that was, that meant that we didn't receive their taxes as at midnight on October 15th.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, at the beginning of the day, on October 16th.
Okay, need a motion, I guess? Yeah, Counselor Slipchuk, which motion you're making?
I'll make a motion that we approve the cancellation of tax.
Number one?
Yeah, number one.
Okay, we'll wait until it comes on the screen. There we go, that one. Okay, any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried, thank you. Oh, sorry. Sorry, Counselor Fadé, I'm just too quick. What's that?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes. Oh, sorry. Thank you. I guess we need a second motion, or second or third? Sorry?
The first motion was to approve the cancellations. The second motion is to deny the cancellations that were not in line with the policy.
Okay, sorry. Anybody like to make this motion?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion, that we deny the cancellations due, for, due to the reasons for being late two years in a row, according to our policy.
Thank you, Counselor Crick, for making that motion. And sorry, guys, I wasn't paying attention. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carried, thank you. Chief? 731?
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, members of council. 731 is the Bringing Back the Grand Center Golf and Country Club Request for Funding and Letter of Support. At the December 8, 2021 regular meeting of the council, administration presented a request from the Grand Center Golf and Country Club for a letter of support from the M D regarding their Provincial Community Facility Enhancement Program, CFIP, their grant application. Council decided to table this discussion to allow more time to gather additional information surrounding the intention of the request. The Grand Center Golf and Country Club is in the process of starting several projects on the golf course that require attention. A list of these projects is provided in initial request, which is attached as Appendix B. To help fund these projects, the Grand Center Golf and Country Club is preparing a CFIP grant application and have requested a letter of support from the M D. Follow-up information was received by the Grand Center Golf and Country Club, you can see that in Appendix A, which clarified the intention of this request, and this additional information confirms that if the grant is awarded, the club will be also seeking funding from the M D for these projects, up to $500,000. The 2022 municipal budget was recently adopted by council with no consideration for grant funding of this amount. If council decided to approve the funding request made by the Grand Center Golf and Country Club, an amendment to the approved 2022 M D operating capital budget would be required. And we're just seeking direction from council as to how to proceed.
Thank you.
So do we have a policy on, that would address this? Like, I know that the previous council gave money to the Bonneville Golf Course, but it's, I just wondered what we, how we feel about that.
Through the reef, to members of council, unless Ms. Kimbo knows differently, I don't believe we have a specific policy on, on, on these kind of grants. These are kind of large and outside the normal, the normal scope of things.
Through the reef, currently, the only two policies that are potentially available would be the Community Action Grant Policy, which we just amended and adopted, and the operating grant, which they do not, they're not listed as one of the recipients. So really, let me rephrase that, the only one that's available is the Community Action Grant Policy, and that is only open to nonprofits, or, or those registered with the, through the Societies Act, through the province. I am not sure if the Grand Center Golf Course is actually society-run or managed or owned. That would be something we would have to look into. But based in the Community Action Grant Policy, we do now allow for capital projects that are quite significant in size. I believe it's up to $200,000 in capital, and 50% matching grant dollars.
Counselor Fadé?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they are, because they are for, non-for-profit, whether registered or not. I think they would have to be if they're applying for the CFIP. I think they would have to be if they're applying for the C FIP. I'm not sure how the qualifications for that would be. So this request is only if they receive the money from from provincial government. And this, the grant application, the unfortunate part about this one that actually counselor, sorry, Deputy Reeve had asked earlier was, is the city of Cold Lake gonna gonna fund some of it? They're not because they're in direct competition with the Cold Lake Run, Cold Lake Grand Center Golf Course. So like everything else we've seen around here, the the infrastructure is is, everything is that fifty years plus where these guys started and everything's failing. We've seen that everywhere and yeah, so I would like to see us support this if they're, if they get it, if they get their C FIP grant.
Yeah, sorry, CEO.
Mr. Reeve, members of council, just we call these letters of support. In the event that the Grand Center Golf Course was successful in getting the C FIP grant, probably a better name for the letter would be a letter of commitment. If 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 we send them a letter of support saying, go ahead and apply for a million dollars from C FIP and we're or or five hundred thousand from C FIP, we're committing five hundred thousand dollars towards that project.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, that was a discussion we had with with the Bonneville course as well is they didn't ask for it the year after. There was a request the year before and they just assumed that it would still continue. And that was there was a lot of discussion in on that. But yeah, that is, that is your.
Absolutely.
Mr. Hogan, you're absolutely right. It is more of a letter of commitment because if these guys do get it, and that's kind of why they have asked for it. And and their updated follow up letter is, yeah, so they're, I'm writing a request. And so to clarify that if we're, if we would request this from the M D, if our C FIP grant is approved, that we would get to five hundred and then they will come up with a one fifty and they're asking for three fifty. So it is more of a letter of commitment.
Mr. Reeve?
Sure, yeah, go ahead and then Counselor.
Just to add a little more clarity around, just because we we've just modified the Community Action Grant Policy. They would have to, part of the requirements now of that policy is they would have to show proof of the other fifty percent matching funds. So whatever they apply apply for, they would have to show proof of of having those funds. As well, there is being that this would be a major capital, it would fall under the major capital category. It would be coming to council for approval should they apply through that policy.
Thank you. Counselor Scarsen?
Sir, are you saying that's where the money would come out of is capital action grant and then also, so that would come out of that seven hundred thousand that you mentioned earlier?
The seven hundred thousand through the reef that I mentioned earlier was for the Community Operating Grant Policy. This one currently, I'd have to double check, but I believe our budget there isn't quite as significant. However, now that council also made the motion to change the Legacy Fund Reserve to the Community Action Grant Reserve Fund. I believe there's around five hundred thousand in that reserve fund currently.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I would just like to, I guess, make the the motion and that we approve this letter of commitment to to the Grand Center Golf Course.
Through through the reef.
Yeah.
To to fund this, your options would be, from what I understand, and if Tolu would, if she has another suggestion, the two options I see available are either through the Community Action Grant Policy or through councils transfer to NGOs and other government. So and I believe that balance currently this year, we have around fifty to sixty thousand left in the twenty twenty one budget. So if it is something that council would like to fund through the twenty twenty one budget, we would need to, we would have to look into which reserve to pull that from.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Reeve, members of the council, just to clarify for council, council can pull the money out of anywhere they want. Any reserve that's that's currently there, including the cash flow reserve, council has the ability to pull money from any reserve, just just for clarity purposes.
So so as we stand right now, we don't have this in our budget to give five dollars to this?
It has not been budgeted for in the twenty twenty two budget, no.
Okay.
And Tolu will probably, the general manager will probably have something to say regarding twenty twenty one budget funds because we are, we will be in the process in the next week or two of closing out the twenty twenty one budget. So by the end of January, I believe, if and I don't believe the C FIP grant, we're gonna know anything. The other problem funding through the Community Action Grant that we just spoke about is the policy does speak that they have to prove matching funds. Well, if we're applying for a grant, we don't know if there's matching funds, but we're committing to a program that we don't know if there's matching funds. I personally think it would be best if wait and see. If council wants to give the commitment letter, we can, we can source the, what account this comes from once, once the Grand Center Golf Course receives an answer from 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 the from the C FIP program.
They don't say when they're, you know, they don't know when they're gonna receive this answer either, yeah.
Through the reef, it normally takes approximately six months.
Okay, well, we could, I guess, okay, go ahead.
And a lot of the requests that are asked are denied. So right now with everybody asking, what is, what is the usual success rate in your expertise, Ms. Keembo?
Through the reef, the ones that receive are more successful than others are ones that are facilitated and lobby through our local M L A.
Okay, we, can you put up his motion there or what? Sorry?
Can you please clarify what exactly you want your motion to be, Counselor Fadé?
All right, I think it is.
Are you just wanting?
I think it's number, number two. But we should kind of, yeah, again, we should really clarify the letter support because really it's that's.
So right now recommend the option number two does specify in principle of, do you want to remove the in principle of to clarify that this would include approving funding if awarded?
Let's just keep it the way it is.
Keep it the way it is? Okay.
Okay, any discussion on this motion?
I got a question here.
Yeah, go ahead.
How much are, how much money are we talking about supporting here that we could potentially be called back to pay?
I think I think the letter that they have asked for three fifty, they're they're applying for five hundred thousand. And they're kind of looking for a similar amount that we supported the Bonneville course for. They're not asking for the same support as the green and gold in Glendon for five hundred, they're just asking for same matching amount as the the Bonneville Golf Course for for a three fifty. And they'll come up with their own hundred and fifty because the the grant itself is for five hundred thousand, so they're looking at a million dollars of putting it into their their infrastructure.
Through the reef, the the letter does specify that they would be asking five hundred thousand with the hope of getting at least three fifty as per what was given to the Bonneville Golf Course last year.
Go ahead.
Are are the golf, the Bonneville Golf Course and this one as well, are they taking into account in our I C F agreements with the town of Bonneville and the city of Cold Lake? Because if we're funding them, then that's a recreation opportunity that we're providing to residents that are not members, residents of the M D of Bonneville.
Through the reef, I believe that because the M D did not actually put a dollar amount or value of our resources or any facilities in our municipality versus in the urban centers, that was not taken into consideration in the I C S.
Yes.
Through the reef, to council and to Counselor Crick, the in Bonneville, the Bonneville I C F does not incorporate the golf course. In Cold Lake, we do have part of the I C F, the Cold Lake Golf and Winter Club.
Yeah, with the I C Fs, you have to remember, it is stuff that's owned by the county or the M D. The Grand Center Golf Course is not, it's not a, it's not ours. I mean, just because they're there, there's still a non-for-profit, but that like they're not part of us. Where the grand, sorry, the Cold Lake Golf Course is actually run by the city. So that's that's a little different then. But the Bonneville Golf Course and the Grand Center are run on their own. They're not, nothing to do with the M D. That makes sense?
Counselors, oh, sorry, you want to comment to?
Go ahead.
Counselor Scarsen?
I was gonna say, that's, yeah, you're exactly right. But the town of Bonneville did contribute a hundred thousand to the Bonneville's Golf Course when they did that project, so.
They contributed how much?
Hundred thousand.
Okay. Is the, is the Grand Center Golf Course, do you have to take part in the rep program to use the facility or is it open to everyone?
It's a private facility, so you'll have to ask them. I don't think they're under any kind jurisdiction. I mean, they are, it is outdoor and it's like everything else, you know, they're they're, they're struggling with with all the COVID restrictions and eating in and eating out. So I think the restrictions are are provincial. And we were very fortunate that we're not in B C where you have to have a pass to even go golfing here, you know, here we don't. So we're we're quite fortunate still to be in Alberta for now, for tonight. We'll see what tomorrow brings.
Just one more comment on the on this. I think we should be careful when we start giving money to large amounts to these kind of facilities. Because it's not everybody that lives in the M D that's paying taxes that uses these facilities. So if we're, if we're putting a bunch of money into Kinnisou, that's a very expensive place and it requires lift tickets to, it's it's not a cheap event for a family to go there, let's put it that way. And same as golfing, it's not a, not something that everybody can afford to go to. So we're kind of, as an M D, then we're funding stuff that's reaching one group of people, not everybody.
Any other discussion? Yeah. It's not like I'm not supporting this, but if if we'd have it in the budget, I think I'd feel a lot more, you know, a little, little easier on this. But since we don't have it in the budget, it's tough to support. But anyway, any other comments or discussion? Okay, seeing none of all those in favor? Opposed?
So it looks like it was a tie vote, in which case, as per procedural by law, tied votes are defeated.
Mr. Reeve, you want to take a five minute break so we'll have the delegation to get set up?
Yes, I just want one more comment, though. It's not like we can't bring this back in the new year and and go for more information, for sure.
This was a letter of request. We've denied it. So right now, they can't apply for the grant, for the five hundred thousand dollar grant, because we have just denied it. So there's nothing to bring back.
Okay.
You guys are in support of it? Yeah, that's interesting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll take a five minute break. Okay, welcome back. We have a delegation here. This is Mr. Clayton Bellamy, Foundation for the Arts. Welcome. Merry Christmas to you guys.
Welcome. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you guys today. I know we're on a limited time, so I'm gonna stick to my script here and just and read, if you'll excuse me. But again, thank you for having us and letting us speak to you about our our project. My name is Clayton Bellamy and we're part, this is Lee Fielding, and we are part of the Clayton Bellamy Foundation of the Arts. A registered non-for-profit organization that was started in twenty twenty and our mission is to build the next generation of artists here in Alberta, in the Lakeland. We are doing this by partnering with Grant McKeon University on an annual scholarship to send kids to secondary education in the arts. We're creating after-school outreach outreach programs with the Bonneville and St. Paul Native Friendship Centers. And of course, the reason why we're here today, which is to build a state-of-the-art theater here in Bonneville. We are doing this because we firmly believe that culture is the cornerstone for a healthy community. And we want this space to be a hub for that creative environment and to fill the void that has been left with the loss of our Laux Victor Albert Center. There are several community groups also in the area that don't have a proper stage to perform. Recently, the Northern Lights School Division has rescinded its M O U with the town. And we are now moving forward with a lease agreement with the N L S D to take over the old gym space at the B C H S. The foundation has acquired a grant writer and we are actively seeking government grants for financial aid for our project. One such grant is the C F E P Money Matching Grant. We require over a million dollars for this project and therefore need to raise five hundred thousand dollars of in cash and in-kind donations, which will then be matched by the C FIP to meet our required budget. We are here today looking for the support from the M D and proceeding with the project and its completion. We are requesting a hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars to help us in reaching our financial goal. The amount is contingent upon the city of Cold Lake giving us funding and maybe more if the city doesn't support our endeavor. We are arranging a delegation with them in the new year. We have enlisted A C I Architecture, who are involved with the renovation of the B C H S for preliminary renders that are available to you. I believe they weren't submitted because they're the security on the emails didn't accept them. But they are available to you, the the three D renders of the project. And they have given us an estimated budget, excuse me, they have given us an estimated budget of one million dollars to complete the project. We've received a generous donation of in-kind staging, drama equipment, costumes, props, lighting and music equipment from the Cold Lake Arts and Entertainment Society. We've also received a donation of theater seats from a company in Edmonton, Alberta. We've received donations of sound equipment from Hanson Productions in Edmonton, as well as several cash donations totaling over a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and we've only just begun. We are in the planning phase of our first annual celebrity golf tournament that will help raise money for the theater and scholarship to help cover operational costs and upkeep that will be at the end of June of twenty twenty two. We intend to run the theater as a business and have consulted with the Mack Lab Theater in Laduke, Alberta, which is also connected to a school and run by a nonprofit organization. We intend to have a part-time theater manager on salary and have hired Invictus Entertainment Canada to book the venue with events to bring in revenue, not only to the theater, but to the community through hotels, restaurants, et cetera. We've also reached out to the community organizations like Premier Academy Cheerleading, Fame Dance School, the Cold Lake Arts Society to rent and use the space for concerts, dance recitals and performances to ensure its viability for years to come and to keep it a safe and inclusive place for the arts in the Lakeland. Finally, I'd just like to go off script just for a second and say, for me personally, why this is such a passion project. When I was seventeen years old, I was a member of the Bonneville Grand Old Opry Association. And being the the only kid in in that organization at the time, the all of the the elders got together and put together what they called a bursary for me for twenty five hundred dollars for me to go to college at Red Deer to pursue music. And at that time, being from a farm, farm family, you know, in the in the early nineties, we didn't have much. And, you know, that was a real gift and I carried that with me for the last twenty years, wanting to always to 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 pay that forward in kind. And this has been an opportunity for me to to take that gift and give it back to our community with interest. So I'm hoping that together we can, we can band together and make something happen with this and, you know, like we said, help to ensure that we're building the next generation of great artists to come from from this town, like the Mike Blooms and the next Brett Kissels, maybe the next Clayton Bellamy. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Any questions? Yeah, thank you, Counselor Fadé.
I just have a couple of questions. So your your second, so appendix B, so the, under the business case, you had under forest of the land and building our own by Northern Lights. So is there gonna be any kind of conflict with you guys putting this capital investment in there and then really kicking you out for being too loud or something or what? Just a question.
Actually, N L S D is, we've got a letter of support from them. They are a hundred percent behind this endeavor because they actually wanted to have a secondary gymnasium. And so in order for them to have that secondary gymnasium, they had to donate the old gymnasium to a nonprofit organization. So initially, the town had an M O U that it was just gonna be a community space. But the N L S D has rescinded that motion so that they can enter into an agreement with us. They, I don't foresee any problems with them kicking us out for being too rowdy. They're really, really happy and excited to have this partnership with us. And I think. to have this partnership with us, and I think, like Clayton mentioned, with us going to the Mack Lab Theater, which is a nonprofit organization separate from the school that runs that theater that is attached to the school, uh, we have a lot of insight into, you know, how to word that least, how to be able to work together cohesively to the betterment of both parties. And they also will receive first right of refusal for any acting that they want to do, anytime they want to use the theater, um, they do get it for no charge. So it's, it's an advantage to them, too.
So, uh, so the, so the second question, it was gonna be kind of the, I guess, a little bit of the tough question that people are gonna be asking out there. So in your opinion, would, uh, would this place take away from the C two center and its rental of concerts and bands and all that stuff, since the town of Bonneville and the M D or Bonneville are part owners and, and that's being subsidized, subsidized venue, uh, would this take away from that?
I don't think so, because there's not, uh, an availability in the town, uh, from what we've done in our research to, that fills that void as far as having a, uh, a space for a stage for theater and dance and music, uh, in that capacity, at a three hundred seat capacity, whereas the, the C two in the, in the, in the big arena area is basically for larger events, for getting up, moving around. This is like a seated, a seated area, and the only thing that they have that's close is the, where they have the movies, um, in, in the back there, and there's, there's no stage, per se, for performances.
And the sound isn't cohesive to performances. So there's, there's really no, like Clayton was saying, no permanent stage where they can actually, we can, you know, because we're endeavoring to have um, this, all of the dance clubs, you know, whether it be Krilla or, um, French or Queuen Dance Club or, uh, this, um, what is it called?
Fame.
Fame. Um, any of those dance clubs come in and use it on a regular basis, not just for rehearsals, but for performances and, um,
Competitions, recitals, et cetera.
Competitions, yeah. So I mean, not just the dance, but all of the acting, you know, if there's any, gonna be any drama clubs, which I know the high school does on a yearly basis. Um, and any other club that wants to use our services, they don't have that opportunity at the C two as much.
Thank you. Those, that was the answer I was looking for. So I know the, the questions are gonna be out there, uh, you know, asked, so, yeah, so thank you for that.
Absolutely. You're welcome.
Yeah, Counselor Scarsen?
Yeah, so, um, thank you for the presentation. It was good, and, um, you know, I think this is definitely something that this area needs. It's been kind of overlooked. We have lots of good, uh, sporting facilities, but not a lot for the arts, uh, which I hear about all the time, so I'm glad this is it. So just so I understand, though, so this is like where the old gymnasium? From the, so what is it right now even? Is it still being used as a gymnasium there?
No, it's just an empty space right now.
Yeah, they've tore out the, the wood floor, so now it's just down to the concrete, and they've basically painted the inside and built the, what will be the stage. So, uh, the, the rest is basically up to us to, to build the, the seating and to soundproof it and to put a, a, a sound system in there and do all of the, turn it into a theater, basically.
Sure.
Would you be using the same stages, or it'd be changed quite a bit?
No, the stage is what it's going to be. So that's already been installed professionally. That's actually, the school owns the stage. That, that will, so that's part of our symbiotic relationship there, is that the stage is actually school property, the, the, and then the, the inside of the building will be the theater, and we'll share that.
That space.
It'll basically be running the same, you know, on the same good fate that the Laal Victor Albert Center was, was run, where they work together always with their scheduling to, uh, you know, to bring about all of these events and everything, except we, we just plan to, to keep it running on a, on a more full-time basis, where there's always events and, and opportunities to keep the theater running, so it can, it can pay for itself.
Okay, thank you.
So is there, sorry, is there, um, so that's the drawing right there?
Mm-hmm.
So what is the?
That's a rendition. We're not, it's not like an approved, but it's one of the renditions that they've come up with, yes.
So what would, what's the seating capacity in there gonna be?
Just over three hundred.
Oh, yeah.
So a little bit more than the Laal Vic, which had a hundred and ninety. So just a nice, small space to hold small concerts. Um, uh, you know, Clayton's already in, contacted in the disent- entertainment, and their, they, their specialty is to be able to bring entertainment on a, to small towns. So, you know, we plan on filling that void and, and, um, for just smaller concerts, nothing like the C two does, and, um, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
So where, where is the next closest, um, similar facility to this? Do you, do you know?
I believe Lloydminster.
Oh, Lloydminster has one?
Yeah.
Yeah, the Vic Jub and Lloydminster, which is, I believe, six hundred seats, so it's, it's double the, the size that we're, we're looking at, but there's, there's nothing else in our, in our area that really fills that, this need.
Okay, well, thank you for your presentation. Merry Christmas to the folks.
Thank you guys, yeah, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, thank you so much.
Yeah, Mr. Reeve, I'll go ahead and make a motion for option number one.
Okay, thank you for making that motion, uh, Counselor Scarsen. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Uh, back to you, Al.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve and members of council. Seven point three point two is regarding the Bonneville and District Centennial Center, uh, twenty-one, uh, capital funding carryover request. At the July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting of council, council approved providing an additional forty-eight thousand to the Bonneville and District Center C two to be used towards their twenty twenty-one capital budget shortfall for the completion of Phase Two of the Agriplex renovations. This brought the total funding from the M D to the C two for twenty twenty-one to a hundred and forty-eight thousand. Due to delays in the project, the C two has not been able to start this project in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one as initially planned, and are requesting approval to carry over all unused funds over to twenty twenty-two. To date, the C two has only requisitioned the M D for approximately nineteen thousand dollars for twenty twenty-one, leaving approximately a hundred and twenty-nine thousand from this year's M D funding unused. The M D does not currently have any policy in place allowing administration-approved requests from C two to carry over any unused funds, nor is there anything in the agreement as such administration requires council approval for this request. Uh, the hundred and forty-eight thousand was already allocated in the twenty twenty-one municipal budget, and we're recommending that council approves the request by the Bonneville and District Centennial Center to carry over any unused twenty twenty-one capital fund, funds from the M D to twenty twenty-two. I would also suggest, um, as I had given this some thought, the town of Bonneville has a policy that's in place automatically, it's just approved administratively through a policy, that potentially council could also with a, um, with a, um, a, a motion arising to direct administration to come back with a policy, uh, should this happen in, in future years.
Thank you. Just look, yeah, thank.
Yeah, I mean, it only makes sense to, um, you know, anytime that there is something that they could, uh, basically save up for to, to, uh, for capital projects instead of, uh, coming back here, so, I mean, it's just money that they, you know, otherwise would just have to look for ways to spend it, I guess, opposed to saving up, so.
Yeah.
I'll go ahead and make the motion, uh, with the addition that the, uh, administration brings a, a policy to approve as well.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Scarsen. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Onto Correspondents and Information?
Mr. Uh, seven point four, the addition to the agenda, so I'll ask Mr. Vespulco to, uh, to approach the bench.
Sorry about that, Al.
Good morning and Merry Christmas, Mr. Reeve, members of council.
Merry Christmas to you, too.
An R F D was presented to, uh, council on April seventh, twenty twenty-one for the purchase of eight light vehicles for various departments, uh, noted, noted in Appendix A. The motion out of that report was to purchase eight light trucks as presented for the amount of three hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty-eight cents, plus G S T noted in Appendix B. To date, the M D has received two of the eight vehicles ordered. Uh, supply chain issues throughout twenty twenty-one had halted the production of the remainder of the vehicles. Therefore, the new supply will be twenty twenty-two models and not the twenty twenty-one models quoted. Uh, this change in model year has increased the price of the vehicles slightly. The new pricing for the two outstanding vehicles is attached on Appendix C and has a total increase of three thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars. Egg Services, three-quarter ton for two thousand, one hundred and eleven, and Parks, Recreation and Culture, one ton for one thousand, three hundred dollars. If council does not approve the funding, Infrastructure Services will cancel the outstanding, uh, vehicle tenders and re-tender the remaining vehicles. As supply chain issues are still an ongoing concern, these departments will likely need to rent additional units until the orders come in, which have not been guaranteed. The rentals are approximately a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars per month. Rental of the vehicle may exceed the cost difference of the new pricing. Also attached in Appendix D is an email from a local supplier informing the M D that they're, they are canceling the two vehicles we ordered from them in April as they are not able to supply the vehicles in the foreseeable future. Replacement of these vehicles will require re-tendering, and those prices will be brought back to council after the tender closes and the tenders are evaluated. With cancellation of the two units, the approved budget will not be exceeded, but the individual prices will be different than what was approved in April. So, uh, the co- the funding would, uh, come from the respective departments allotted equipment replacement reserves, and administration is recommending that council approves the unbudgeted expenditures for the two, the purchase of two light vehicles in the amount of three thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars to be funded from each respective department's allotted budget within the Equipment and Replacement Reserve Fund.
Thank you. I need a motion.
Motion, Mr. Reeve.
Thank you, Counselor Kryevak, for making that motion. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Al, we'll go to Correspondents and Information.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Reeve and members of council. Uh, so the correspondence that, uh, you have in front of you, uh, for the most part, a lot of it is, is just a regular correspondence. I would point out, though, to you, uh, eight eleven, which is a letter from Alberta Transportation, uh, describing the work plan for twenty twenty-two and into twenty twenty-three on Highway twenty-eight. Um, uh, six, uh, Range Road six-ten is also being repaved to Bonneville Beach, uh, from Highway twenty-eight, and you can see the intersection work that's going to be done at Ardmore, Fort Kent, um, and at Range Road six-ten. There's also a note in that letter that I thought was important, because, uh, the Reeve brought it up with the minister when we met, uh, uh, over a month ago uh, regarding speed limits at Vezel Beach, and you can see that Alberta Transportation has denied the request to, to reduce to eighty kilometer an hour at Vezel Beach. Uh, they have some theory that, uh, rural Albertans just ignore speed limits anyway. If you read the note there, I thought it was, uh, I thought it was an odd comment that, uh, because it's going to be ignored anyway, we're not going to actually reduce the speed limits. Um, it's interesting comment, uh, um, uh, from the minister's office. In, in any event, you can certainly read that, and that'll give some indication. Uh, I, in, in, uh, fut- further correspondence that I've had with the department, it's likely that this construction doesn't take place till twenty twenty-three. I understand they're still in some negotiations with landowners, um, and if that doesn't get cleared up, uh, quickly, uh, it won't go to tender this year. It would be a twenty twenty-three project. But those projects are going to get done in the next year or two. It just, a, a lot of it is dependent on, uh, on, on landowners. Uh, the, there's another letter there from the Canadian Forces Military Police, a request for a congratulatory letter being signed by the Reeve. We have certainly prepared that, uh, for the Reeve. Um, and, uh, then down to eight twenty-five email from resident rest for, request for recognition. We have been, uh, uh, had a request to be part of a, of a letter of support to rename Highway twenty-eight or a portion of Highway twenty-eight as, um, in, in honor of Victor Ringette, uh, who passed recently. So we, if, if council wants, we can certainly bring back, back to council as an official request, or council could, uh, provide some direction for that today if they would like. I, I don't have much information on it, other than just the, the, just the note we received from the resident asking us to consider it.
Okay, thank you.
And just a motion to receive for information would be fantastic.
Sure, I'll make that motion, Mr. Reeve.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Kryevak, for making that, uh, motion. Any discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carrie, thank you. Eight two six, reports? Who wants to start?
I'll start, uh, yeah. Today's a great day, uh, last meeting for the year. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Freya. Counselor Kirk?
Uh, Merry Christmas to everyone, and thank you to all the staff for the wonderful work you guys do around the M D and here. Um, one thing I would do, want to mention was, I was at the, I went to the LARA meeting for Dawn as an alternate, and then brought it up at the Egg Service Board meeting here, uh, last Friday. There's, there was some interesting discussion about the regional variety trials that we're doing in Fort Kent, so the regional variety doesn't try, that's, they don't want to pay, they don't pay anything actually for those. We just do them as a service for the farmers. And, uh, we publish the data, which is very useful for our farmers, but I think in a year, one or two years here, regional variety trials is changing their, what they're, what they're allowing, and we're, even if we do the, the trials, we're not gonna be allowed to publish that data anymore. So, just a kind of interesting thing there that, and it costs, it costs about, LARA about twenty-seven thousand dollars a year to do that, those trials, which, right now, that we can publish the data, it's useful for the farmers, what it sounds like, and talking to a few of them, but something that might change in the future here, so.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Kirk. Counselor Scarsen?
So, um, the only, um, committee meeting I've had since last council was for the, um, C two, and there's, uh, I'm sure everyone knows by now that the C two is moving ahead with rep, the R E P program, starting on Monday, so we'll see how that rolls out. Otherwise, that's, uh, that's all I had.
Thank you, Counselor.
Slipshit?
Well, first off, Merry Christmas to everyone, and wish you all, very Merry Christmas to you and your families. And we had a good, uh, little meeting with, uh, Litland Lodge and Housing Association last Wednesday, and then they're looking forward to going this spring, because they were moving that little church along there, and they're gonna have an outdoor activity center for the seniors and that. And also, uh, we had a great Christmas party that evening with the staff and the board members.
Counselor Kryevak?
Thank you. Uh, at a police committee meeting, what was discussed, uh, in February two thousand twenty-two, traffic tickets will no longer be dealt with in the court system. Maybe you guys know that, I'm not sure. Tickets will be an administrative, uh, penalty. If you want to appeal, you'll be going through adjudicator and not a judge, so this takes effect in February of two thousand twenty-two. If you don't get any speeding tickets, you don't have to worry about that. We had an industry meeting, uh, meet and greet. There are concerns with road bans, uh, trucks running twenty-four seven is a concern for the residents there, because Devon did not run twenty-four seven. They ran, I think, from, from eight P M to six A M, they were not running, so there's a concern there with noise. And there's a concern that employees have to be double vaxxed, whereas they're allowing six companies that they don't have to be so concerned with that. And the rest, uh, have a Merry Christmas and all the best in two thousand twenty-two, everyone.
Thank you, Counselor Kryevak. I guess, uh, Counselor Scarsen got some?
Yeah, I just, uh, I just have some update on that, because, uh, as a contractor to Cineral, we got emails there the other day that, um, all, all employees and all contractors, regardless of status, had to be tested before coming on site, so that's a new, uh, policy that they're implementing there, so.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'm gonna call upon Robin to, uh, this is a, we didn't really have a staff party this year, but we had these things given to everybody, a bag for everybody, so Robin, I'd just like you to tell, tell council here who all had their hand in this and, uh.
Good morning, Mr. Reeve. Good morning, Mr. Reeve. It was Tracy Waslow, Jolene Albert, and myself that prepared the bags.
Okay, well, thank you, guys. Give him a hand for that. So, yeah, we couldn't really have a staff, uh, Christmas party this year, so these, uh, three lovely ladies prepared these bags and, uh, for each and every one of the staff, uh, and, uh, Alan, myself, and some of the directors and, and Robin, uh, we went, uh, door to door, uh, and, and handed them out, and, uh, it was a lot of fun, so. And Merry Christmas to everybody out there, and, uh, have a Happy New Year as well. And Merry Christmas to everybody out there, and have a Happy New Year as well. Thank you. So I guess we're going into closed session now? Can I have a motion? Thank you, Counselor Crick, for making that motion to go into closed session. All those in favor? Carrie, thank you. I guess we're looking for a motion on this branding. Is it coming up on the screen? Oh, before you put it up there? All right, would someone like to make a motion? I guess if we had them all up there, we could read them all, but.
Sir Reeve, yeah, I think it's, I think, from what I understood, I think it's, I think council options was number one, that council rejects the regional economic development brand design as recommended by the Regional Economic Development Committee as presented. Correct? Right, because that wasn't that, the way we were going to do things? No, no problem. I know it's Christmas. Yeah, that's it. I'll make the motion for option one, that council rejects the regional economic development brand design recommended by the Regional Economic Development Committee as presented.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Freya. Any discussion on this motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Carrie, thank you. All right, I guess we need a, yeah, Counselor Crick makes a motion to adjourn. Thank you, everybody. All those in favor?